Folks. Let's go. The press in the Down Beach Current were notified of this meeting. A copy of same was posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building and on the municipal website. The meeting will come to order. Would you please stand for the flags of it?
Thank you, Mr. Lee. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which is safe, one nation, united in its own liberty and justice for all.
Tom, would you call the roll, please? Mr. Becker, here. Mr. Blumberg.
Here.
Ms. Thaubie.
Here.
We happy for us the minutes of our meetings for February 20th? What is your pleasure?
I'll make a motion when we approve those minutes.
I'll second.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Blumberg.
Yes.
Ms. Thaubie.
Yes.
Is there any public comment?
Sewell, 22 West Drive. Mayor, I know you're not a fan of reading papers, particularly those outside of the AC Press. And besides, even if you did read the AC Press or the Philadelphia Inquirer, you wouldn't be aware that last week a 13-year-old teenager in Patterson, New Jersey was mauled to death by a vicious dog. Mayor, your primary responsibility as a public official is to protect the safety, health, and well-being of the citizens, particularly tender-aged children, little ladies, and even people like yourself. So while we have time, let us not dally and instead pass a cloth jaw strap ordinance to protect people from vicious dogs. I realize the solicitor has concerns about enabling the dog to attack when it needs to attack, but that cloth jaw strap, little band, pops off in a millisecond. So your dog can still...
Bite you?
Bite you, appropriately, perhaps. And this ordinance would prevent this mayhem that occurred in Patterson, New Jersey. It's a non-intrusive device. It works very similar to the theory of crocodiles where they take some duct tape and whirl it around and this vicious animal that could literally, you know, kill you in a matter of seconds is rendered unable to do serious bodily damage. With the explosion in vicious dogs, people using them as weapons, it's incumbent upon this commission to pass a cloth jaw strap ordinance. For $5, a child's life could be saved. What will you tell a parent when their child is mauled to death, Mayor? That you sat on your hands when you could have protected that child from imminent danger and death? Let's do something productive and constructive and let's keep your solemn oath to protect the safety, health, and well-being of our citizens, Mayor. You're negligent here, Mayor. It's going to come back to haunt you someday and believe me, I'll be loud and clear when it does. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else?
Sheldon Einstein, 6th Street, Jasper. I said my bad things and now I want to say my good things. During the winter, I was coming down the street and I had a broken water pipe. I stopped and I said, "There was a gentleman out there in a Margate truck." And I said, "Do you have anything to do with the water department?" He said, "Yes." I said, "I think I have a broken pipe out there. Would you, you know, when you get a shot, would you come over and look at it?" When I got home, he was there and he had the thing pulled apart already. I mean, you couldn't ask for anything more than that. Whoever does your plumbing out there and whoever's responsible for the water pipes did a great, great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank Rishetti is sitting back there. He'll pass that off to our team. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Sharon Simon, 424 North Thurlow Avenue. I received a call the other day from a reporter from the press, Alyssa Lala. And she wanted to know, she heard through the grapevine, which was a direct line from Commissioner Thaubie to the reporter, about this report that I opred about Ford Scott. Now, the only people that knew I opred it were the people in the clerk's office and Solicitor Abbott and a couple other commissioners. And none of them called the reporter. But you wanted this out because you want to put more derogatory information out about Tom Hiltner. But here's the thing. Ford Scott, this is kind of like Christie and the Fort Lee controversy. This is now the Thaubie and Becker, for that matter, Ford Scott controversy. Ford Scott was hired as an independent auditor because you were convinced there was so much that the clerk was doing, stealing things, doing all kinds of inappropriate things. And then, after you hired them and after you publicly stated that you hired them because they contributed to your campaign, which is pay-to-play, and after you insisted on going forward with that and it got reported and now we have a whistleblower suit, you want out in the public that you put all this information that you dug up, some incorrect information, and passed it to the Ford Scott, the independent auditor, who then put it basically word for word in their management letter. So I don't know why you want that out in public and as far as the legal aspect of it, that's for the attorney. But that's just putting a nail in the coffin of the case that's against you. It's retaliatory. Meanwhile, we have an attorney we've already paid $135,000 for. I just learned from my opa request that we've allocated $325,000 in legal fees in our budget, which is unheard of, and the man's still working without a contract and billing knowingly with the blessing of this commission.
15 seconds, Sharon.
And we're going to allocate another $100,000. And to what? Defend the commission? Defend against what? Because you've retaliated. So I hope that Ford Scott knows this is out there because now that has discredited their reputation. No independent auditor comes in and has a commissioner write derogatory, inaccurate about the clerk, sends it to them, and it's not part of a law case. Thank you. So glad it's out there now, Brenda. Really speaks well of you.
Anyone else?
Hi, Ed Berger, 9402 Amherst Avenue. I'm the president of Margate Business Association and I just wanted to bring up one issue that I'm getting downstream of a little bit, apparently from some of the fallout from the miscommunications over the beach advertising and what's going on. There are very, very few vehicles that are available to local businesses to get their names out. You can advertise in the local newspaper. You can utilize the calendar, some of the vehicles that the MBA offers. There are no billboards in Margate. There are no electronic billboards for sale in Margate. I would hate to see the baby to be thrown out with the bathwater in this particular case on behalf of the businesses. The amount of advertising on the beaches is limited. I don't see it as being obtrusive. I would hope that as we move forward with it, even though there's been some indications that some folks aesthetically don't care to see the advertising on the beach, that as long as it's conducted properly and it's restricted tastefully through specifications, that this platform for our businesses to reach out to the people to come here in the summertime and our residents to attend their businesses would not be taken off the table for them as a resource for them to get the names of their businesses out. I also wanted to echo something that was said earlier about the cleanup after the snow for our businesses. I pulled onto Atlantic Avenue early in the morning after the snowstorm and I was headed towards Vetner. And it's remarkable how the ability to drive on clear highway stops at the Vetner line. You can look up past the blinking lights on Atlantic Avenue as you're going towards Atlantic City and the moment that you get to our town line, there is a decisive change in your ability to drive. The guys did a great job. They did a great job of clearing out Vetner Avenue so our businesses and our business districts can be open that morning and on behalf of them, we appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank, stand up and take a bow.
Mike, I just wanted to comment related to Ed's first statements. I believe that the prior two commissions voted unanimously in favor of advertising and allowing advertising on the beach shacks. So it wasn't a decision that was made by one person. It won't be a decision that'll be made by one person. It'll be up for discussion and a full commission vote. The way I looked at it and still look at it is that it does afford a tremendous opportunity for those businesses that want to advertise, to have their names out there. Most of the businesses that advertised in the past do many, many, many other things for the city free of charge. For this, we charge them a little bit of money and we give them the opportunity to put their names out there. So it will be, Ed, a full commission vote like it has been in the past and we'll go from there. So thank you for your concern.
Thank you.
Can I respond to her?
You may respond also.
Over there are, speaking of the last commission, our two resolutions and a story that the current did in 2011, awarding the contracts stating that we were going to net $14,000. Well, we only got paid $58,000, $5,866 and then replaced those signs for $4,500.
Frank, do you know how much we invoice?
No, what I'm saying is, and I'm sure we probably paid for the signs initially, so it could have been for us a loss and I don't see the value. There's no value.
This is not, okay. And fine, Mar, this is not the time to debate that. There will be a time and you probably will be part of the debate, okay?
But the calendar, I think, is a great opportunity and I'm excited about you taking over. And the newsletter, I think we talked about eventually maybe the MBA take, and that could be a good opportunity too for advertisements, just about.
Any other public comment?
Steve Warner, 103 North Sumner Avenue. I wasn't going to say anything, but I might as well chime in on the beach advertising. From what I understand, the city paid like $3,000 or $4,000 to fix the advertising, which people hadn't even paid for to begin with. I heard that. In any case, what I'm getting at, let me just say this. If, also, on the other hand, people want to get their name out there. I understand that too. Being in business myself, I don't know that that's such a bad thing. I think people maybe should get their name out there. But the price, we're arguing possibly about the price. If the city's going to do it, they should be compensated, you know, with a proper compensation, not, really, it seems to me this advertising was done for virtually nothing. So if the people want to pay a certain price, then maybe they should be allowed to do it. They should pay to put their own sign up there and they should be given, you know, maybe $5,000, $7,000 a year, more money, and then let them have the name out there. But certainly the city shouldn't lose money and it should also be administered, this shouldn't allow, this situation shouldn't have been allowed to happen. So going forward, if the people want to pay, maybe they should be allowed to pay. That's all.
Thank you, Steve. Any other public comment? Is there a motion to close public comment?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Blumberg.
Yes.
Ms. Thaubie.
Yes.
Is there any public comment on resolutions and second reading of ordinances?
Sewell, 22 West Drive. Mayor, your undivided attention and focus to Resolution Number 65. Are you there, Mayor?
I'm with you, John.
You're on page?
I'm on page.
Okay, very good. Watch it closely because all that's free is not free.
Are you telling me you're against trees now?
I am a Joyce Kilmer fan, Mayor, way back to WW1. So no, what I'm against are trash trees, junk trees. You know what they euphemistically call swamp maples or silver maples? You've got to realize the cost to clean up trees which produce tons and tons of leaves. We're already spending a huge bundle cleaning the inlets and photographing and cameraing them to death. So to have 2,000 seedlings of trash trees, I strongly urge that there be some oversight here and if they want to give us seedlings, let them give us Japanese dwarf red maples, Mayor. They grow very slowly and produce very few little leaves. So let's do it right. Let's not do it because our Presidente back there wants something for nothing again. That doesn't cut it, Mayor. Let's do it properly. Let's do it professionally and not tolerate this type of nonsense. While we're on it, Mayor, Number 60, what's this $5 grand for life enhancement? Is it something like Cialis or something? What are we getting for the $5 grand? Now, now, don't let the purian interest run wild.
This, John, the insurance JIF typically requires each city to have a...
Life enhancement?
Not life enhancement. It's an employee assistance program.
The double nickel, Mayor, on the previous page, what's that $18 grand going to give us?
Do you want your answer, John, for...
I got the answer. It's a JIF cherry on top.
Correct.
Okay, double nickel, Mayor. Flip back to the other page carefully. What are we getting for this $18 grand, Mayor? Any idea?
Hopefully he's an employee attorney and hopefully we won't have to spend a penny.
But we've been spending a humongous amount of money.
Yes, we have.
$135,000 with that $300 an hour meter running at warp speed when the sweet spot in this whole matter was about $300,000. You know, this is ridiculous, Mayor. And I propose that you and your cohort, co-defendant and co-conspirator be personally liable. Thanks to Rosie, I've been directed to the JIF opa man and when I get those briefs, you're going to have to listen to those briefs for the next six months or more because for you to spend our tax dollars and so it's your personal ATM machine, that's got to stop, Mayor. You want to be litigious? You be litigious with your own greenbacks. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, John.
Ed Berger, 9402 Amherst Avenue. Because I like dogs so much, I'm going to read you a list of the trees. Bayberries, beech plums, black gums, chestnut oak, hackberries, lobleaf vines, but these are all prepared by the New Jersey Forestry Service to enhance a barrier island. They're specifically selected for a community like ours.
Indigenous.
So once again, simply because it seemed to be a good opportunity to blow something out of proportion, I had to get up here and waste your time. I apologize for that and I apologize to the audience for having to make restitution. Thank you.
Steve News, 912 North Lancaster Avenue. This is about the trees I overheard. I had to come back in. You're talking about indigenous trees, you mentioned, which are very important. I could send you an email about how important the indigenous trees are because trees are very good for the community because we have like over paved this town and I'm really concerned with the way the water drains out and stuff like that, what trees do up toward the water. And that would help even just a little bit during flood damage because it does help things up. But as long as indigenous trees are concerned, yeah, and I think it's a very, very good idea to bring as many trees as we can in this town. That's it.
That class that you're taking, I learned about indigenous trees and drainage and everything and how it helps and you're going to love it. You're going to love that class.
Yeah, it's good for sustainable Margate. There is a big move on these kind of things throughout the state. It's a very, very important issue.
Thank you, Steve. Any other comment?
This is regard to Resolution 62, the dog park.
Just state your name for the...
Oh, yes. My name is Sharon Simon and I live in Margate at 424 North Thurlow Avenue. Thank you for asking.
You're welcome.
We hired Richard Deeny as a BA and we pay him a good amount of money. He's a good guy and knows his stuff. And Commissioner Thaubie and Mayor Becker, you were very adamant about hiring this person because just like you wanted an independent auditor, you wanted a business administrator. And you've talked about all kinds of policy manuals and we need procedures and we need to do this. And every time Mr. Deeny has come up with a recommendation or suggestion that's in line with what you guys like to do or want to do, "We got to do it, we should do it," Mr. Deeny said. Mr. Deeny, our business administrator, suggested that we wait a year and come up with a policy. It's a reasonable solution. Aunt Pankos is going to have another, her birthday in a year, if you want to do it on her birthday. Aunt Pankos is a friend of the two of you and you've also worked with her very closely with the Concerned Citizens Group, which is fine. However, she is controversial, as I am, and she's always felt that she could come up here and say what she thought was right or wrong. But in addition, she put, the group put ads in the paper of all the city employees' salaries. She put disparaging remarks in an ad about Commissioner Blumberg. And also, Commissioner Blumberg is really the person responsible for the dog park. He's the one that introduced it. It got approved. He was the one that had to sit up here and hear complaint after complaint about a fence being broken, the dogs are too loud, the dog dirt, and so on and so forth. And very often Aunt Pankos was sitting in the audience. So if there is a need to credit somebody with the dog park, it's actually Commissioner Blumberg, not Aunt Pankos. There are plenty of people in this community that think that Yogi Hiltner should have his name somewhere on that field, but you two despise him and have gone after him and would never name anything after him. So let's not, you know, say, oh, this person, this person, that. Aunt Pankos was an activist, as I am and everybody else is. But why don't you listen to your business administrator since you hired him to do that? Thank you.
Any other comment?
Steve Warner, 103 North Sumner Avenue. Sharon, I wish you could get your facts straight, okay? Concerned citizens never put the salaries of city employees in the paper, never paid to put the salaries of city employees in the paper. That's absolutely wrong, okay? And so, you know, when you don't say one thing right, then you don't believe anything you say. Also, if Mr. Deeny felt so strongly about this, where's Mr. Deeny? You know, as usual, you don't make very much sense. I think that it's an excellent idea to put Aunt's name on that park. This is a person who had the best interests of Margate at heart in everything she did as long as I know her and whether she was an activist or not, I still think it's an excellent idea. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve.
For the record, I had this discussion with Mr. Deeny. I know he's not here. I would not misquote him in an email. Regardless of the decision made by the entire commission on the instant request, I do support the idea of a written policy for future guidance. I've had no less than five different people over the seven years that I've been in the job that have asked me, could we honor their lost ones by dedicating a piece of city property in their honor? I've had to say no. We don't have a policy. It's never been discussed. I didn't bring it forward. On my own, I had to tell these people no. That this is now public. I went to Mr. Deeny. I spoke with him. He suggested that I suggest to the commission that we wait a year, we come up with a policy. If we're still passionate, we can do this when the timing is better. That's my position. That's the only point I want to make.
Thank you for making that. Any other public comment? Is there a motion to close public comment?
I make a motion to close public comment.
I'll second it.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Blumberg.
Yes.
Ms. Thaubie.
Yes.
Mr. Hiltner, please.
Ordinance, second reading of 2014-6 for the sale of Block 38, Block 401.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Blumberg.
Yes.
Ms. Thaubie.
Yes.
Second reading, 1407, appropriating $3,734,000 for various capital improvements. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Blumberg.
Yes.
Ms. Thaubie.
Yes.
Second reading of 2014-08, bond ordinance approving various water and sewer improvements in the amount of $974,299.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Blumberg.
Yes.
Ms. Thaubie.
Yes.
Ordinance 1409, first reading for capital improvements and repairs necessitated by Hurricane Sandy and we're looking to get the damn payment money back on this one. His second reading is April 17th at 5:00 PM.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Blumberg.
Yes.
Ms. Thaubie.
Yes.
Resolution 54 authorizes the payment of claims and payroll. Make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Blumberg.
Yes.
Ms. Thaubie.
Yes.
55 awards professional services contract to Grusio Pepper not to exceed $18,000. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Blumberg.
Yes.
Ms. Thaubie.
Yes.
56 authorizes application for the Section 5310 program funding for FTA.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Blumberg.
Yes.
Ms. Thaubie.
Yes.
Resolution 57 urges the U.S. House of Representatives to immediately pass the Homeowners Flood Insurance Affordability Act. I'll make that motion.
And I'll second. But wasn't that, I think it was passed today, wasn't it? No? Okay. I'll second.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Blumberg.
Yes.
Ms. Thaubie.
Yes.
58 authorizes the payment to Colmar Homes in the amount of $745,93.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Blumberg.
Yes.
Ms. Thaubie.
Yes.
And 59 authorizes payment to Jersey Architectural Thoroughly in the amount of $768. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Blumberg, I'm sorry, Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Ms. Thaubie.
Yes.
And 60, awards professional services contract to associates for life enhancement for $412 per month.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Blumberg.
Yes.
Mr. Thaubie.
Yes.
Ms. Thaubie, proof change order for beach stair replacement, a decrease of $1,240. Make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Blumberg.
Yes.
Ms. Thaubie.
Yes.
62 authorizes dedicating the Margate Dog Park to Aunt Pankos.
I'll make the motion.
I second. Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Blumberg.
No.
Ms. Thaubie.
Yes.
63 authorize application to local finance board for the waiving of the 5% down payment. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Blumberg.
Yes.
Ms. Thaubie.
Yes.
64 amends 2014 temporary budget.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Blumberg.
Yes.
Ms. Thaubie.
Yes.
65 supports the New Jersey Tree Recovery Campaign.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Blumberg.
Yes.
Ms. Thaubie.
Yes.
And 66 authorizes executive session for any pending or anticipated litigation.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Blumberg.
Yes.
Ms. Thaubie. Mr. Tobi.
No.
Okay. We, thank you, Tom. We obviously, after last, but we'll be going into executive session. We're going to have to ask you to leave the room. We will report back when we come out of executive session.
Maury requested it. I don't...
Pardon me? It's about possible litigation. Anticipating, John.
Anticipation is greater than the realization.
Sometimes my anticipation is... I promised myself I wouldn't engage.
You have the ability to turn a table?
May the public just stop?
Should we see if there's anybody waiting outside?
Frank, would you go see? We need you for this, Tom. We need you to do this.
Go on.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. We need a motion to reconvene the public meeting.
I'll make a motion that we reconvene the public meeting.
I'll second it.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Blumberg.
Yes.
Mr. Tobi.
Yes.
It is 6:10. Scott, do you...
Mayor, for the record, we have come out of closed executive session. That was pursuant to Resolution Number 64, was it?
Sixty-six.
Commissioner Blumberg wanted to express concerns he had about the possible or the anticipated litigation regarding an employee discharge from Public Works. The matter was vigorously discussed between the parties. There is no action to be taken at this time.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion. We close the meeting.
Second.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Blumberg.
Yes.
Mr. Tobi.
Yes.